The Kerrville City Council is once again in session at 6:00 PM. And Judy Eitner is going to lead us in prayer and then the pledge. The stand.
Lord, we come to you tonight with lots of things on our hearts. We're in a world of a lot of turmoil right now. And we just ask, Lord, that you be our guiding light. Help us to know where to go, how to go. Just be with us as we make the decisions we make. And we just ask, Lord, that however you can, just be with the leaders of our country. Be with those that are just doing things in a way that they feel they're following their heart. But we just ask, Lord, we need your direction. We need your love. We need to feel you. We need to know that you're there. And that's all that we ask tonight. In your name, amen.
Amen.
We mentioned several things as we began. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic and emergency situation we're all dealing with, we're thankful that we have a way for the public to remain engaged and participate in open, public council meetings in various ways. Citizen, our public participation has been available by calling in, emailing, or using the City Hall Dropbox before 5:45. All of these instructions are provided online in the agenda. Any questions that citizens and visitors might have may not be responded to until after public comments have concluded and if a member of council raises the question. Finally, we have attempted to omit any nonessential items from the agenda like announcements, public forum, and items for future agendas. Instead, citizens and the public are always welcome to contact the city via our website, city app, email, and phone to make comment or ask questions on any subject. We ask for your patience regarding any difficulties that might arise as we move with this new format on a temporary basis. We come now to our consent agenda. And these items are considered routine and can be approved in one motion unless a council member asks for a separate consideration of an item.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to approve this, but I would also like to just thank the staff. I'm pleased to see what they've done with a new agreement. And I just think they've done a good job. I just want to say thank you, Jill.
And I do have some questions about 1A. So I don't know if that means we need to pull it or just have questions.
We need to pull it.
We need to pull it, yeah. So 1A is pulled, and then we'll go to...
I will move to approve 1B and 1C.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of approving 1B and 1C? If you'd like to be known by the raised hand, okay? All right.
Okay, just a couple of questions. What happens should we have a cart that say that the battery has a default? Because I have experienced personally, you just get a lemon sometimes. Our extreme heat just breaks it down faster. So I was just curious. I couldn't see in the information what would happen in that case.
Yeah, so that's one of the benefits of the lease program versus an outright purchase. With the lease program, essentially, we're able to send that back in for repair or have it repaired. If it can't be repaired, for some instance, it is a lemon, so to speak. It gets replaced.
Okay. And then what will you do with the old carts?
So those are at the end of this lease, so those will be returned.
Okay.
And the same with this five-year lease. Essentially, we'll be returning those carts at the end of the five-year time span. As was the case in this, you know, and with a lot of battery technology, great improvements are made over, you know, a three- or five-year time span. So a lot of times, the technology will improve where it gets a better quality product at the end of the lease, and it makes sense to return those and get the new one, get the new upgrade.
Yeah, the lithium batteries are much better.
Significant upgrade.
They make the cart lighter and everything, so it's less wear.
They reduce the staff time. Sorry, let me interrupt you. They reduce the staff time and the maintenance required. With the lead acid batteries, we're having to do a lot of water maintenance and kind of topping those off.
Exactly. I think I had one other question, and it was... Okay, so am I to understand the increase in fees will offset the difference?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I read that correctly, but...
And those are essentially what we've indicated within the Agenda Bill, what we would be proposing for the fee increase that will be implemented starting in the next fiscal year.
Okay, which would be?
October.
October, okay. Thank you.
I got one question. The... Okay, after the five-year period, is that a case then that these are returned? Or you've got the option to continue to use them?
You know, at that point, there would be the potential for a purchase option, but we would typically recommend that they are sent back, and we look at getting a new product. Over five years, golf carts get pretty beat up.
Let me just say, as somebody that played in the Chamber Tournament yesterday, these carts are ready to be returned.
Yes.
Yes, I could say that for last year, too.
They're at the end of their life cycle.
Yes.
They get well-used.
They do, and that's the purpose of them. That's why you lease them, so you don't have to dispose of them.
Yes, sir.
So we encourage people to come out and test our new carts.
That's right, absolutely. It'd be another quality experience at Scotts Run Golf Course.
Look forward to it.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve item 1A.
All right, there's a motion to approve item 1A.
I'll second.
All right, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. If it passes unanimously.
Mayor, on the next item, we'd like to defer it, pull the item. We have had some issues with getting product from Byboard after all for the cabin chassis. So the chief is exploring purchase of this item locally, and we just don't have all the quotes in yet. So we're negotiating on quotes, and we'll probably have that at your next meeting.
All right, okay. Right. We move to the issue of the water line on Blue Bell Road.
I'll be very brief. This is essentially a water line replacement from Jackson to Blue Bonnet Road. It is approximately 1,375 linear feet of eight-inch PVC, replacing six-inch, we'll say it's six-inch cast iron pipe. In reality, it's mostly pipe clamps from all the repairs that we've done over the last several decades. That's basically the pipe in its existence right now. So if you, in that area, have heard from residents in that area, this is a frequent water line break issue. We had several days, in fact, that were out during the summer of last year, one of the hottest times of the year, not a good time to have the water out. And so at that time, we really began to evaluate moving towards a full replacement of that. This, we got quality bids in from Balcony's Ridge Construction, and this includes both the replacement of that pipe as well as a resurfacing of that roadway, because it will significantly, the roadway's not in great shape right now, but it will do significant damage when they have to pull that out in its entirety and put that replacement. So there will be base repair work that will be completed, and then a resurfacing of that roadway segment.
That's great.
Should be good to go for many more decades.
Good.
And that road will probably, it'll all be closed at once, I would assume.
So we'll work through that. I believe the water line is actually located to one side. And so we'll try to keep traffic, obviously, open as best we can. That is one of a main connector through that neighborhood. So we'll be working through that with the contractor to minimize the disruption. There will be some disruption, no doubt, but we will try to minimize as best we can for the residents.
You know when they'll start? Do they estimate how long it'll take?
We're hoping that they'll be able to get started. Obviously, we've got to go through the contract process and get all of the insurance and all those elements in. But we're hoping that they can start within the next 30 to 45 days. It should be a 90-to-120-day project unless we hit any snags. But we should be completely done by the end of this calendar year, for sure.
Wow, it'll take that long?
Just a little bit I know...
At the longest, at the longest. We really, we're hoping and we can do this from there.
Just a little bit I know about utility construction from working in other locations. That's a really good bid, in my opinion. I was shocked to see for that length of a pipe, including the resurfacing. So good job, the city staff, for negotiating that down and getting down to that level.
Yes, we were really impressed.
Your feet, what is that? From what block to what block? Is that the entire?
Jackson to Blue Bell.
Yeah, Jackson to that intersection of Blue Bell and Red Bud.
The council has heard from this from me several times, but I'm going to go ahead and mention it. Right after being elected mayor in May of 2018, the city started paving our street. I live on Blue Bell. And there was some consternation that the mayor was getting special treatment. But they paved right up to my property and no further. But now, the water line is going in and the resurfacing of that street. I want you to verify that this was needed.
Absolutely needed, yes. This was identified by staff as one of the most broken water line in town. So, you know, we have to dedicate resources to the areas that need it most, and this was absolutely one of them. We were spending an inordinate amount of staff time and unfortunately putting the neighborhood through quite a few water outages.
I remember at one time, and then I'll move on, at the end of the street there at Red Bud, talking to the city workers as they were working on a break. And the other end up at Jackson Road, they were working on a break. So anyway, all right. Do we have a motion in regard to this matter?
I'll make a motion that we approve, item 2B.
Second.
All right, okay. All in favor of that motion, if you'd like to be known by the raised hand? Okay, and it passes unanimously? Okay. Briefing in regard to response on COVID?
So before the chief gets started on this, you're going to hear from him about we have yet six more cases today. And so we continue to see a growth in cases. And right before this meeting started, we had a joint press release come out between us and the Fourth on the River Group, Arcadia Live, that we made a joint decision to go ahead and cancel the Fourth on the River for this year just because of the, you know, the concerns about the spread of the virus, given the environment that we're in now with more cases. It was a hard decision, but it's something that their board and the mayor and the city staff worked on most of the day today, just trying to work through and see what could be done. And ultimately, that was the joint decision that was made.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, just in response to that, I want to thank the Fourth on the River Board and Arcadia Live for, in my opinion, making a really, very, very difficult decision. They have hundreds of hours invested in that. It's an emotional decision, and I just applaud them for stepping up. And I applaud our staff for working through the details. And Mayor, certainly your part of it, I know there was a lot of discussion. But particularly with the governor tightening up that order, I guess, that he came out with today on outdoor gatherings, down anything over 100 now is discouraged greatly. And so I really think they made the right decision. And I just, I applaud them for stepping up and doing that.
I would like to add to that. The folks that do the Fourth on the River, I mean, this is a group of local citizens who have put that thing together year after year and have worked incredibly to make it happen. And so when they step up and say, in light of what's going on, we feel like we shouldn't have it this year, I appreciate it.
Well, and I hope that in the future, next year, that the city can possibly do even more than we have done in the past to help them in light of this. So I think we'll at least take that into consideration next year.
And I'd like to throw in my thanks, too. I just, I appreciate the very adult way that everybody worked together and listened to each other and sat down and talked about it, because it was, it was a tough decision all the way around. So I just applaud everybody and say thank you, too.
I would say so also, because I know this had to be a very, very hard decision. And because of the fact it's such a hard decision, I feel like they did it for all of us. And so I want to say thank you for their mature and responsible thinking in a very tough position.
I don't know how to add anything other than what any of you have said, but I feel a great sense of relief personally. And because of my personal feelings, I hope that our citizens also feel that sense of relief. And to everyone, guys, the Fourth on the River Group is phenomenal. They've worked hard. And it had to have been a very hard decision for them to make and for the city to work with them in order for it to be such a decision. So to everybody, all my sincere thank you.
Hey, well, good afternoon, Mayor members of council. Guys have thought about the Fourth on the River and a lot of times spent on COVID-19 practice. I've got a short presentation for you tonight. It should fit in with the discussion that we've already had. Just to start out with the, looking back at the past week, June 14th through the 21st, 333 COVID-19 tests conducted. We had a pretty good spike last week, 32 confirmed cases. When I updated this morning, our total count for Kerr County was at 53 cases. But as the city manager mentioned earlier, within the last four or five hours, we've had an additional confirmed six cases. So right now, we have 32 active, and we're still at one death in Kerr County.
But none are hospitalized yet.
None of the 32 are hospitalized at this time. And this just looks back at the spike for last week on 6/15, which I think was Monday of last week. We had 21 cases. And then on the 16th, which was the following day, we had an additional eight. The 17th, additional three. And then on the 19th, a total of nine confirmed cases. Most of those were our employees at the water treatment plant. And then we had some more come in on the additional 12 on the 22nd. So again, that number says 53, but right now, our total count is at 59 with additional six that was confirmed today. The National Guard, we continue to try to bring them back to do testing at every opportunity we get. They were last here on June 11th. They conducted a total of 41 tests. Those, that particular testing date was cut short at 2:00 because the National Guard got word that not necessarily the test kits that we were using in Kerrville, but the batch that the test kits in Kerrville came out of, there was some contamination with it. So the testing was cut short at 2:00. They've done their due diligence with that. There was no problems with our test kits, and all 41 results are back. There were no positives in that group. And we've confirmed that the National Guard will be back in town on June 30th, and we plan to host them at the Doyle. Nothing has really changed on the COVID-19 hotline, so I won't spend any time on this. But we're only getting about two to three calls per day regarding COVID through our hotline. And you can see the questions that are being asked are pretty consistent with what I've shared with you before. And as I always close with, this last slide, it just talks about some reminders. You know, as we discussed earlier, COVID-19 remains a threat. And I think the governor was pretty clear yesterday that the increase that we're seeing now in the state of Texas is unacceptable. And it continues to go up. But we're seeing some unacceptable numbers, per the governor's words on yesterday. And he really encouraged the citizens in our city, the state of Texas, you know, to do their due diligence and practice good hygiene, continue your social distancing, stay home if you're sick, wash your hands, all that good stuff. And for that risk group, you know, if you're over 65 and you don't have to be out there, we certainly encourage you not to get out. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have for me on it.
Chief, I don't know if it's for you or for Mr. McDaniel, but where are we at? Or what is the, remind me of the orders, I guess, that if we have certain percentage of increase over a period of time, then we can actually reduce our mandatory back to lower occupancies in some of the restaurants and bars?
Given all the different orders that have been out, there's some confusion about that. And I'm actually going to ask Mike. We talked about that this morning, and so, Mike, if you could clarify that?
Right, that only applied for, you know, a week or two. If certain counties were at some level, then they could go to increased occupancy. But basically, the state is under the same occupancy limits now, and so that doesn't apply.
No matter how many cases you have, it stays where it's at.
Just add to what Mike said initially, that criteria was placed on counties opening back up to reopen Texas. And we were one of the counties that were allowed to go to the 50% occupancy rate. So if you had five or fewer cases, which we did at that time, then you could open back up. And the criteria by which we would have to revert to a 25% occupancy...
But that's expired, basically, now.
So it's 50% until further notice?
It's 75%.
75? Okay.
The 30th, the testing would be where?
Doyle Community Center, Doyle School Community Center, June 30th.
Oh, okay, sure, like it was before, yeah.
Correct.
I showed up at 3:45 to get tested. They had closed it up, but...
Yeah, they got the call around 2:00 in the afternoon that there could possibly be some contaminated sample kits. And the Colonel, you know, with the National Guard made the decision, well, let's just shut it down since we're not sure. We don't waste any time with bad samples. But as it turned out, none of ours were contaminated, and we've got the results back out of the 41 tested. No positives in that group.
I was going to say, I encourage people on the 30th to go to the Doyle School Center on Barnett. If it was done like it was last time, well set up, they had plenty of personnel, and it was just, it was a good setup. I had seen it earlier in the day, and I should have gotten tested then, but anyway.
Well, they'll be back on the 30th.
Yeah.
And it's free.
So that's another one of those items that has changed over time. So to be clear, when it started, you couldn't even reveal the location until 48 hours in advance. You had to have an appointment, but those standards are different now. You don't have to be symptomatic, and you don't have to make an appointment to be tested now.
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's, you're not required to schedule in advance. You can just show up. It's a walk-in. You know, what we've done at the Doyle is not drive-through, it's walk-up. So anybody who think they, they're not as strict with the criteria as they were before. So anybody who think they may have signs of symptoms or want to be tested, we encourage them to come out.
I believe there was a press release about the hospital. I know that's not something, but for the city specifically, but they are going to reopen out at the Youth Event Center their mobile testing? Is that?
I have not heard that.
No, that's not a thing? Okay.
Yeah, I have not heard.
We've got a joint call with them tomorrow morning. We'll learn more about what their plans are. But I'm not sure what, you know, what they're doing.
Yeah, I haven't heard that they're opening. Sorry, I didn't mean to chime in on you. I had heard that their Peterson is opening back up, but, you know, we've done...
Peterson, opening up the...
At the Youth Events.
That's what I meant. I misspoke, I guess.
But we've done the National Guard testing at the CROCK, and then we moved it to the Youth Event Center.
Oh.
And that was after Peterson had closed down.
So yes, that's what I meant to say. I think I confused this year.
So we've done a combination of, you know, in the city, you know, at the Doyle, and then at the CROCK, and then out at the Youth Event Center.
Those are, the National Guard at the Doyle, the Peterson is now going to...
We had them out on a couple of occasions at the Youth Event Center.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Chief, what if, what if there was individuals who said, hey, I'm not going to stay home and self-quarantine? If they knew they had been tested positive? What, is there a, they just, somebody just calls and says, please, stay home?
Well, we've actually had an incident of that occurring in the county, and we contacted that individual and encouraged them to abide by the Department of State Health Services guidelines. But there is some criteria that, legal criteria, that DSHS can enforce their quarantine. So if we were to get word that that individual was not abiding by the recommendations DSHS had given after we talked to them, then our next step would be to contact DSHS to really implement the teeth in the law in terms of mandatory enforcing the quarantine.
Thank you.
And I guess, Chief, in light of that, I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to imagine this, that if you're an elderly person and live at home by yourself and you're quarantined, do we have anybody checking on those people, making sure they've got food?
The Deder Center is trying to do...
If they're Meals on Wheels people.
Okay, they're picking those people up, okay.
And I think Light on the Hill is doing the same thing. I mean, she's got...
A list of people that she checks on.
Okay, so there's somebody tracking that and watching that.
I think as long as somebody knows about them, yes.
Yeah, just let us know if you know of anyone that hasn't been accounted for.
And just to add to that, I don't, it's been a while since I heard those numbers, but when we talked about that, they were making an ungodly amount of calls per day just following up with that elderly population.
I figured there was. I just kind of wanted to be reassured.
I don't remember what the number was, but I was amazed at how many calls they were making on a daily basis.
Yeah. I have a question. Is the quarantine still 14 days?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And another question. If a business wants to require masks, they have the right to say, don't come in without a mask, right?
Legally, I think they can do that.
They can do that, can't they?
Yes.
Private business. But how about City Hall? Can we say...
We could, yeah, we could do that with respect to our property, city property.
All right. Chief, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for all you guys do.
Mayor, let me have one more comment. I forgot to thank you as being part of this group that made this decision. I didn't want to let that go because I never talked to you, but I know you. And I know that, because I know you, that has been heavy on your heart.
Yeah.
And I want to thank you for all of the consideration you gave to this, as well as everyone else.
Good, well, thank you, thank you. You know, it's on me in terms of the initial agreement, you know, sign up on the agreement. But obviously, the concern grew as the cases grew and as I heard from more people in the community. But thank you. Okay, financial update.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
I feel like I've...
Do you dream numbers?
At times, yes.
I bet she does.
I feel like I've talked to you all about city finances quite a bit lately. So this won't take too long tonight, but I did want to give you a few updates. And we're going to start with some numbers that you've seen before, but I wanted to go over them. An updated 2020 projection. So we talked about this last month, that we were going to update our scenario analysis after we'd gotten sales tax in in June. So we've received those numbers, and we've gone back through and updated the analysis. You'll see over on the far right-hand column that $721,000 number down at the bottom. That means that we've updated our scenario analysis and that we think that it is going to be better than what our original analysis looked at. We were pretty conservative, I think, and, you know, we really factored in two months of complete shutdown of businesses being completely closed for two months, and that didn't happen. And also, when we did have businesses closed, we still did see more sales tax revenue than what we were expecting. So a few things to note here. You'll look at that difference from April projection column over on the side there. The biggest changes are on sales tax, and that's based on the actual sales tax that we've received not being as low as we expected. On the EMS side, I've actually made the projections a little bit worse than what the initial scenario took into account. And basically, we're seeing call volumes that are even lower than what we were expecting. And basically, we're seeing call volumes that are even lower than what we expected. And we'll get into that a little bit more. But 33% lower than the previous year for the month of April, and then 20% lower for the month of May. So continue to see lower call volumes there, which is not something that we planned on when we initially did the projection. Municipal court, a little bit better than projected. Once again, that has to do with the court opening back up sooner than projected. Recreation revenue, a little better than projected also because the KSP has opened back up, the pool has opened, and there are a lot of people enjoying those amenities. And then the all-other category, that's primarily due to our solid waste surcharge. So we get a tipping fee from Republic based on how much waste goes over the scales there. We were thinking that with businesses completely closed, we would see a decrease there. And we have not seen that. We've actually seen an increase. Plus, we think with the recent storms that we've had, we'll see an increase because of those as well. So we've changed that. Just moving into the sales tax assumptions a little bit. You can see graphically, month by month, we have received confidential sales tax information by payer from the comptroller for the month of June. And so, you know, while I can't say anything about any particular sales taxpayer, I can say that online sales, online retail sales were significantly better than what we were expecting. And then also, as a regional retail hub, Kerrville has definitely benefited in categories like home improvement. Those stores have, have done well. And then moving on to actually looking at May. For the month of May and the general fund, looking at the middle column, year-to-date fiscal year 2020, we've received revenue of $21 million compared to expenditures of $17 million. And a few things on the revenue side there are, as we've talked about, the EMS revenue being lower. That 13% is a year-to-date number. So year-to-date, billable incidents are down 13%, but specifically, the months of April and May are what's driving that down. Recreation revenue, $140,000 less than budget. The month of May, revenue down significantly compared to the previous year. But good news to report in June, looking at just the first 15 days of June 2020, we had revenue that equaled the entire month of June 2019. So coming, coming back on strong, especially at KSP. And then municipal court, significantly lower than budget. And looking at that May in particular, down 76% compared to the previous year. General fund expenditures, we are seeing savings compared to budget because of vacancies, because of all the budget cuts that we've implemented, so the hiring chill. We've seen reduced supplies and equipment spending, no travel, reduced training. We've also started to see some savings from budget because of the changes in our paving schedule. And moving on to the water fund, looking at the water fund through the end of May, 8.1 million in revenues compared to 8.3 million in expenditures. Few highlights there on the revenue side. So we're a little bit below budget on the water revenue side. And specifically, we talked about this last month. We're seeing commercial consumption that's down. And so we expected that with closed schools, especially in the university, that kind of thing. So we definitely are seeing commercial consumption down. We're also seeing irrigation down as well. And I think that's due to the, you know, we've had decent rain and it hasn't gone too long without a lot of rain. So, but it is important to remember that when we're comparing to budget, like, we have this base year that's supposed to be a historically average year. And, you know, I don't know that that actually exists, but that's what we're comparing to. So, so some of this, I think we probably can make up depending on what, what the summer holds weather-wise. But, but the commercial consumption will continue to be something that, you know, we did just lose some commercial consumption and it was not made up for on the residential side. We saw some increase there, but not enough to cover the decrease in the commercial. Water fund expenditures are trending better than budget. Same, same kind of thing. We have some vacancies and reduced maintenance and supplies expense there. Then I wanted to hit a few highlights on our other funds. On the Development Services Fund that you'll see up at the top, it's impressive that as of the end of May, the Development Services Fund has hit their revenue target on permits and fees for the entire year. So they've made their annual budget as of the end of May. And then they have some savings on the expense side, too, because they've had a vacancy and some lower software costs. Looking at the golf fund, they've been impacted significantly. And, you know, we're closed for a period of time. Parks is working hard to promote the golf course. You may have seen some of their advertisements recently. They had some Father's Day promotions, that kind of thing. So they are working hard to try to get more people out there. And then finally, on the Hotel Occupancy Fund, there's a one-month lag here. So these May revenues represent April stays at hotels. And you'll see that the occupancy tax is down 83% compared to the previous year. So very significant. And I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on hotel closures. Checked with the CBB. And so at this point, it's just En of the Hills that remains partially closed. But apparently, they are open for some previously booked groups. So they had some group reservations that had been on the books for a while, and they are opening and honoring those reservations. But at this time, they're not taking new reservations. And then I believe all the other hotels are back up and open. Super 8 had been closed, it's back open. The YO had been closed, it's back open. So we should see some upticks coming soon there, but significant hits for sure. All right, that's it. Any questions?
Ms. Dozier, I have a question. As you have given us these updates at each council meeting, are we, are we gaining or losing? And it looks like we're gaining.
Yes, we are. It's, things are not as bad as we thought they were going to be. It is still important to note, like, on the general fund side, even though we revised our projections, we revised them in a positive way, so that's good. But we're still looking at missing our revenue budget by 1.5 million, $1.5 million short on the revenue budget. So there's still significant impacts, but it's certainly better than what we thought it might be at this point, so.
Because we were starting at 2.3 million?
Yes, and now we're down to 1.5, correct.
Okay, all right.
So yeah, headed in the right direction, so.
I guess we could have another Mother's Day, just like have next year's early.
I think that sounds like a great plan.
It seemed to help.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. I need to apologize to Ms. McElhanan. I have just ignored her tonight, reading these items in. And so I've been moving ahead, my apologies. And you have a new assistant with you tonight?
Yes, sir, the new Deputy City Secretary, Keisha Francina.
All right, good, good. All right. Then if you will read in, ers ordinance.
Ordinance number 2020-13, and ordinance amending ordinance number 2018-19, which created tax increment reinvestment zone number one. City of Kerrville, Texas, by increasing the number of board of directors for the zone, containing the cumulative clause, containing the savings and severability clause, and providing other matters relating to the subject. No speakers have called in.
Okay, all right.
Council, you remember that last time you all directed staff to increase the membership of the TERS board from five to seven? So that's simply what this ordinance will do. I know, and also going over the language in the state law, there's, perhaps it's an anomaly, but I feel like it's important to track state law language. You all may designate the chair, but not the vice chair. And I think that may be a function of the TERS board. So I just tracked that language, so that's a minor change. But the most significant change here is obviously going from five to seven members. So this will be first reading, second reading will be at your next meeting. And I think you're slighted to perhaps even make appointments at that next meeting as well.
Can we do that at the second reading?
Yes, you can.
Okay, good.
All right, Council?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2020-13 as presented.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand? Okay, and it is unanimous? All right. Is there a motion for us to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Under 551.071, 551.072, and 551.087.
I'll make a motion to do so.
Okay. All right. Okay, all in favor? And for those watching, we will go into executive session. Don't know exactly how long this will be. And then come out after that and probably don't have any action to, to move on tonight. But anyway, all right, let's move to the anteroom.
I think, are we moving in or standing in here?
I'll chief Smith.
Oh, we're staying in here? Okay, okay. We come out of the executive session?
Okay. Sorry, 7:07.
All right?
Yes.
Okay. And at 7:07, we're adjourned.